Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Colton.
Johnston.
Here.
Lurick.
Here.
Manon.
Blatt.
Here. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item number two, which is the invocation will be offered by... Oh, I'm sorry. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance, after which if you would remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Lieutenant Tammy Moore from the Salvation Army.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless you. Well, as we know, Christmas is right around the corner, and though we would love to really stay in the Christmas season's spirit, of course, business still has to be dealt with, and we still have hard decisions to be made today, and of course, we have to accept the fact that not everybody is going to be happy during these business urdeals. But I want to leave, as we start to conduct business, I want to leave you with this quote from Nelson Mandela. It says, "Our human compassion binds us one to the other, not in pity or patronizingly, but as human beings who have learned how to turn our human suffering into hope for the future." So with that, thank you, Lord, for this is the day that the Lord has made, and may we all rejoice and be glad in it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda... Oh, before we go to this consent agenda, if you are here for agenda item number eight, it has been pulled from the agenda. So we'll move to agenda item number three as a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed, can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider payroll and material claims for the month of November 2019. Good evening, Ashley. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I am presenting the payroll and material claims report for November 2019. Total payroll and material claims for the month were $9,342,990. Payroll-related claims were $5,351,192. We had changes in field positions of an increase of one full-time and an increase of two part-time for an overall increase of three positions for the month. Vendor claims were $3,991,798, and I will go over the top large vendor claims. We paid DePacto Inc. $952,713 for apron rehab out at the airport. We paid Rush $181,097 to purchase a sanitation vehicle, as well as fleet equipment and maintenance supplies. Kenworth Sales Company $147,995 for a street heavy haul truck and fleet equipment parts and supplies. The remaining large vendor claims explains 91.84% of all of the vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, we have given you information on our November purchase card activity. You can see that we had 1,192 transactions for a total of $327,732, and we had 159 cardholders with transactions. We also had eight purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
Questions, council? Thank you, Ashley. Move to B, Childcare Advisory Committee reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Anita Willie to continue her service as a member of the Childcare Advisory Committee. Ms. Willie's term will begin December 16, 2019, and will expire December 16, 2023. C, Pocatello Regional Airport Commission reappointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Mike Ennis to continue his service as a member of the Pocatello Regional Airport Commission. Mr. Ennis's term will begin December 8, 2019, and will expire December 8, 2021. D, council decision, Copper Creek subdivision final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Copper Creek subdivision, which subdivides approximately 7.64 acres of land into 40 lots subject to conditions. The property is located east along Surprise Valley Road and is a replat of the Copper Creek subdivision. E, council decision, Point View Apartments' final plat approval. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving the final plat for Point View Apartments, which subdivides approximately 1.83 acres of land into eight lots subject to conditions. The property is located south of Quinn Road and east of Philbin Road.
Mr. Mayor?
Council President Johnston.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is communication proclamations. We have no proclamations tonight, and so we'll move to agenda item five as a calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On December 12 at 9:00 AM will be a work session. On December 19 at 1:00 PM will be a council liaison work session clarification, missions, and value statement discussion. At 5:00 PM will be...or 5:30 PM will be the agenda clarification meeting, and at 6:00 PM will be a regular council meeting. Other events, December 7 and 14, wild winter weekends at Zoo Idaho from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. December 7 and 21, music in the library, Marshall Public Library. December 7 at noon will be classic Christmas melodies. December 21, at 1:00 PM will be holiday classics, carols, and other favorites. December 12 and 13, Pocatello Regional Transit 32nd Annual Holiday Lights Tour. Tickets are not available anymore. They have sold out, so if you're going to try to get some, get them for next year. The Marshall Public Library has shortened service hours in December. The hours are...you know what? They actually added a bus for that this year, and so that's a very popular thing. So we kind of chuckled, but if you want some, probably ought to be thinking about next year seriously on that. Sorry, I just got sidetracked. The Marshall Public Library has shortened service hours in December. The hours are 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Regular hours will return on January 2. Community Recreation Center will be closed on the following dates for the holidays, December 25, Christmas Day, January 1, New Year's Day. December 6 at 11:00 AM will be a ribbon cutting for the North Gate Development. If you would like to attend that, you will need to park your car in the Wellness Center at...do not be much later than 10:30 because we will take a bus from the Wellness Center to the on-off ramp down there.
The interchange?
The interchange, yeah. And so the ribbon cutting will happen on the bridge. ITV has got that going. I believe it's going to happen right in the middle of the bridge, and so you will not be able to drive down there, and so you'll park at the Wellness Center parking lot about 10:30. If you're late, you missed the bus, I'm sorry. We'll move to agenda item six as a public hearing. Proposed fiscal year 2020 budget amendment for Hillview Settlement Trust Fund. This time has been set aside for council to receive public comments on proposed fiscal year 2020 budget amendment related to Hillview Settlement Trust Fund. An ordinance has been prepared for council's consideration under agenda item number 15. I declare the public hearing open.
Good evening, Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. The 2020 budget adopted in August of 2019 was developed before the amount of the Hillview settlement case was announced. Tonight, the Finance Department is requesting budget authority for expenditures related to the final settlement for the Hillview case. The cash for this settlement was moved into a trust fund at the end of fiscal year 2019. Authority is needed to complete the settlement payouts to the claimants as specified by the court. The total amount for this amendment is $4,500,000. This amendment process began with the two required public notices on November 13 and November 20 in the Idaho State Journal. No action will be taken at the end of the public hearing, and then at the end of tonight's meeting, the council will consider the amended ordinance. This concludes my presentation.
Council, do you have any questions for Ashley while she's up here, right? Ashley, has there been any correspondence that we have not seen?
No.
Have we had any other correspondence in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Then we will look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony of those uncommitted to the application? Any testimony opposed to the application?
Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. I would like more information on what this all entails and read Amendment Number Five of the Constitution. No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation. So I would like to know what this is really going on here and why this is coming out of the public treasury and who made the mistake, because it should be coming out of their pocket. Share that in the name of Jesus.
Thank you. Any others opposed to the application? Okay. Yeah, why don't you...you could come up here and kind of explain...what was the question, Nikki, you just asked?
Who's...who did this? Who caused this? Who's mistaken?
Just some background of the lawsuit, just...maybe it should be Jared.
Well, so I know that lawsuit's been going on for a few years. The claim period goes from 2012 to 2014, and so any pilot fees that were collected during that time are to be returned to the users, so that is what this money is being used for.
Okay.
I have nothing more to add, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then I declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item seven, a short plat Wallace subdivision. Steve Wallace of PIH Properties LLC, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, RMEs, has submitted a short plat application requesting to subdivide and replat the east 154.4 feet of Lot 9, Block 1, Richland Townsite, into three residential lots. To be known as Wallace subdivision, the property is located at 517 McKinley Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request for the short plat.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eight was pulled, and so we'll move to agenda item number nine as declare the city buildings as surplus and declare minimum bid amounts public works. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of staff regarding the following properties. A, declare the following properties as surplus. 1428 North Third Avenue Survey Annex Building, 1121 South Second Avenue Former Sanitation Department Facility, 1080 South First Avenue Former Street Operations Facility and Storage Lot, and if approved, B, declare minimum bid amounts for each property to be auctioned in accordance with Idol Code 50-14-01, conveyance of property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve these properties as...declare these properties as surplus and that we declare the minimum bid for the survey building of $99,600, the sanitation building, $612,000...$612,000, yeah, and the street department's building, $774,000, and the lot that's available, $39,600. That would...as explanation, that includes the appraisal price plus 20%. That's my motion.
Second. So we have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Bray. We got some questions.
No.
Okay. Then a motion by President Johnston, second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Adamson.
Yes.
Lurick.
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 10, agreement primetime auctions. Council may wish to approve, subject to legal department review, an agreement with primetime auctions incorporated to auction properties as outlined in Agenda Item Number Nine and Nine B.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the primetime auction agreement, subject to legal department review, with one correction. I would suggest that we add...that we amend the proposal to exclude the six-month provision extending the marketing time to primetime, and that would be my motion.
Second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Does that allow the 10 days?
The 10 days are already in there.
Okay.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, agreement, sale of surplus property, salt storage shed. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of the Street Operations Department and authorize the mayor to sign and execute a purchase and sell agreement between the city and Idaho State University, ISU, for the sale of the salt storage structure located on South First Avenue, subject to legal department review. The salt storage structure was declared surplus by the council on November 7, 2019. Idaho State University has agreed to purchase the structure for $125,000 in as-is condition, and let's see, the city will have no...have joint use of the structure for the 2019-20 winter season. The city will not indemnify ISU against any claims that may arise from the owners of the parcel where the structure is located. The agreement is awaiting final review from ISU.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve the recommendation of the Street Department for the agreement of the sale of the salt storage shed to ISU and authorize the mayor to sign and execute a purchase and sale agreement between the city and ISU, subject to legal department review.
Final review. Second.
Thank you. I noticed that you didn't say all of the S's.
I know, sorry. I cut out the surplus.
Anyway, we have a motion by Lurick and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 12, piggyback bid of Sourcewell contract for NAPA IBS Store Fleet Department. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of Fleet Services and authorize the mayor to sign and execute a contract, subject to legal department review, with Integrated Business Solutions powered by NAPA. This piggyback bid award on Sourcewell is for the implementation of the NAPA Integrated Business Solutions Store within the Fleet Services Department. Funds are available in the department's fiscal year 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we have Jeff or Teresa come up and explain what's really going on, because I think this is such a positive thing that the public should be aware of the success we're experiencing.
Do you want Jeff or Teresa? Jeff jumped there, I mean, you're getting Tom. You wanted Jeff or Teresa. You're getting Tom. Tom's what we want.
That's who I really want.
We drew straws real quick.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Kirkman, Deputy Public Works Director. This is one of the last stages of implementing our new Fleet Services Division, where we're moving all of the maintenance of all city equipment, with the exception of a few, into one centralized location. This is going to allow us to have our own parts facility within the...within our building that will service only city equipment. What we're able to do as well with this is we're able to leverage the buying power of this large company to get us our parts at a considerable reduced rate. We're seeing anywhere from 20% to 30% reduction in prices, plus this allows us to not have to manage our inventory. They're coming in with the inventory. They're fronting the inventory, and so we only pay for it as we need it. We feel that this is about as good of a deal as we could get. We're pretty excited about it.
Would you describe the parts person's relationship to the city?
So the parts person is supplied by the NAPA parts store, and so we are not adding any headcount to the city. That person will be hired, and all of the hiring, as well as all the employee HR things will be taken care of through NAPA. However, we do have the authority to say if it's not working, we need another one. But we are not increasing any headcount on this, so we're pretty excited about it.
I want to congratulate you, Teresa and Jeff, for the success that appears to be taking place with this program. It's a tremendous contribution that city employees are making to the citizens of Pocatello.
It is, and I would just like to echo that. Teresa Cottell has done an amazing job as our fleet manager, and she just continues to excel every day, so I appreciate her immensely.
It's my understanding they also will become our parts runner and carry for us, and so we won't have people running the Salt Lake and all that stuff. Is that right?
That is correct. That's a great point. Part of the benefit of this, like I said, and they're such a large...this is a worldwide organization, so they have warehouses all throughout the country, basically, and so they have large freight vehicles coming through both north and south through Pocatello pretty much every day. There's been some instances where we're in a large snow event and we have a part fail on a snowplow. We've had to send guys down to Salt Lake in the middle of the night to try and get parts so we can get back up running, because the city never sleeps, right? And so this is going to allow us to be able to hopefully expedite that a lot more. They're guaranteeing us an 85% on shelf for our parts, so 85% of the time when we need something, it will be on the shelf. The other 15%, they'll have it by the next morning, so we're pretty excited.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Yes. I move that we approve the piggyback of Sourcewell contract for NAPA and that we make this subject to legal review and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, spiral heat exchange issue sole source expenditure and declaration request, WPC. Council may wish to accept the recommendations of WPC staff and authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the request for the following items. A, declare the purchase of three new spiral heat exchangers for...from Alpha Lava Incorporated to be a valid sole source expenditure for the purpose of repairing the digester heating system. B, approve the purchase of three new spiral heat exchangers in the amount of $126,000 from Alpha Laval Incorporated. Funds for the purchase are available in WPC fiscal year 2020 budget.
I think it would be an appropriate explanation to let the audience know why this is a sole source.
Who do you want? Do you want Levi or Jeff?
Oh, I want Teresa.
Or do you want Teresa? Teresa, come on up.
Come, Levi, yes.
Levi Adams, superintendent for WPC. These pieces of equipment were originally custom-built for the digester heating process in 1990. They've had a 30-year lifespan and are beginning to break down, getting some small leaks in them. They need to be replaced. They're an integral part of the digester heating system, which is an integral part of our biosolids process out there at the stream of blood.
And if we did not use this sole source, what would be the consequence?
If we were not able to use this sole source, the...first off, the equipment probably wouldn't fit in the existing place, so therefore, we would have to replumb all of the heating system and piping system, which would increase the cost economically.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept the recommendation of WPC staff and authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the request for spiral heat exchanger...well, sole source expenditure and declaration request for spiral heat exchangers for WPC. Is this one subject to legal department review?
It's been reviewed.
Oh, okay, so never mind the last part.
Did you...a motion to declare it sole source?
Yes, sole source expenditure and declaration request.
Second. We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14, AmeriPride contract housekeeping department. Council may wish to authorize the mayor to sign and execute a contract with AmeriPride to provide cleaning supplies for city departments. This contract will result in a cost savings for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the AmeriPride...Amera Pride contract.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15, an ordinance approving an amendment to fiscal year 2020 appropriations ordinance, increasing the total fiscal year expenditures in the amount of $4,500,000 to account for expenses related to the Hillview Settlement. Council, how do you wish to have the ordinance read? Councilwoman Adamson?
Mayor, I move the ordinance, Agenda Item 15, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication, and that the entire ordinance be submitted for publication. Is that right?
Yes. Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, amending ordinance number 3034, the appropriation ordinance for the fiscal period October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020, providing for an increase in expenditures in the Hillview Settlement Trust Fund, which increases the total fiscal year expenditures by $4,500,000, providing that the revenue to pay for said increases shall be derived from previously unappropriated cash balances, providing that all other portions of the appropriation ordinance number 3034 shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Thank you. I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number 16, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, you will have three minutes per speaker and a total of 15 minutes for this agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Thank you. Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Idaho, 83201. Her preamble of our Constitution states, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and do secure the blessings of liberty for ourselves and our posterity, and do ordain the Constitution as the law of this land," and I emphasize, "as it was established by God." Daniel Webster stated, "I am committed to the Constitution of the country, and I am committed against everything which in my judgment may weaken, endanger, or destroy it, and especially against all extension of executive power, and I am committed against any attempt to rule the free people of this country by the power and the patronage of the government itself." John Adams stated, "I first saw the Constitution of the United States in a foreign country. I read it with great satisfaction, as a result of good heads prompted by good hearts. I have repeatedly laid myself under the most serious obligations to support the Constitution. What other form of government indeed can so well deserve our esteem and love?" Thomas Jefferson stated, "I, however, place economy among the first and most important republican virtues, and public debt as the greatest of dangers to be feared. To preserve our independence, we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt. I am for a government vigorously frugal and simple." Benjamin Franklin stated, "Only a virtuous people are capable of freedom. As nations become corrupt and vicious, they have more need of masters." John Adams stated, "Our Constitution is made only for a moral and religious people; it is wholly inadequate to the government of any other." Samuel Adams stated, "The sum of all is, if we would most truly enjoy the gift of heaven, let us become a virtuous people; then shall we both deserve and enjoy it. While, on the other hand, if we are universally vicious and debauched in our manners, though the form of our Constitution carries the face of the most exalted freedom..."
the form of our Constitution carries the face of the most exalted freedom, we shall in reality be the most abject slaves." George Washington stated in his farewell address, "Of all the dispositions and habits which lead to political prosperity, religion and morality are indispensable supports." Thomas Jefferson stated, "We in America do not have government by the majority; we have government by the majority who participate. All tyranny needs to gain a foothold is for people of good conscience to remain solid." James Madison stated, "A well-instructed people alone can be perpetually a free people." George Washington stated, "A primary object shall be the education of our youth in the science of government. In a republic, what species of knowledge can be equally important, and what duty more pressing than communing to those who are to be the future guardians of the liberties of our country." Thomas Jefferson stated, "I know of no safe depositor of the ultimate powers of society but the people themselves, and if we think them not enlightened enough to exercise their control with a wholesome discretion, the remedy is not to take it from them, but to inform their discretion by education. This is the true corrective of abuses of constitutional power in the name of..."
Thank you.
"...restor this."
Thank you. Next, Lydia Noble.
Lydia Noble, 2042 Cassius Street in Pocatello, 83201. I've been a citizen, a resident here in Pocatello for over 28 years and paid my taxes. I guess in light of the recent tax issues this city has been having, it's captured my attention, and I'm much more concerned about how our money is being spent. I thank the council for our layer hard work and their efforts, but I just came up here to explain that I really feel that any amount of money spent on a new logo, especially if that money is going to be going out of state to Utah, to a company in Utah, is not something that we should be doing, and I believe that there are many more important things here in Pocatello that that money could be spent on. And I just want to make sure the council knows that at least that is my opinion, and I hope that you will consider that in your future decisions about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for being with us tonight. With that, we are adjourned.